Welcome to the special board meeting of the Holden Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, July 26, 2022. Hope everyone had a good time off. Please note that this meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have most trustees attending in person with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn your desk mics on when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and camera when you are recognized to speak. Turn off your camera and mic otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, you will be muted. Trustees, please note that tonight we have legal counsel from Mila Thompson and parliamentarian Kapoor in attendance. The first order of business is the land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land acknowledgement.
Holden, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaq.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding me greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
Four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Trustee Masti Amar, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
Thanking through you, Mr. Chair. Please join in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. God, I thank you today for giving us the opportunity to reflect and learn from each other. We thank you for giving us the opportunity to grow and become Christ-like here. We thank you for bringing us together to help each other. Amen. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. And please rise up for the oath of citizenship.
There were no motions adopted in camera. Moving on to the next order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Vice Chair Agnew. Looking for a second, please.
O'Brien.
Taken by trustee O'Brien. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Oban Chenara.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew. Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
Abstained.
Trustee De Rosa.
I'm opposed.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie.
In favor.
Sorry, I didn't hear that.
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Masti Amar.
In favor.
Trustee Tokiva. Okay. We have four in favor, two opposed, one abstained. The motion carries, the agenda is approved. Moving on to the next order of business, which is the declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none, we move on to the next order of business, which is action items. Code of Conduct, I will now hand the floor over to Vice Chair Agnew for this section. Vice Chair Agnew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so as trustees are aware. The special board meeting this evening is to discuss and consider the motion that was passed at a previous meeting with respect to the code of conduct. Can you just scroll down? So some background information, at the May 24, 2022 special board meeting, the following two motions were carried. Resolve that the board of trustees agree in regard to the allegation from trustee Duarte regarding trustee Ian Tomasi that there was a breach in the code of conduct. Resolve that the board of trustees defer imposing sanctions until trustee Ian Tomasi is able to respond and no later than Friday, July 29, 2022. And so again, the purpose of the meeting this evening is to confirm sanctions. We do have a recommended motion that could be here for consideration by trustees, unless there is a will for trustees to put something else forward. So you will see here that the following motion is recommended, suggested for consideration of the board. Resolve that this board of trustees impose the following sanctions to trustee Ian Tomasi. So again, we don't have to go with that particular motion, it is there for consideration. I would open up the floor for discussion and and hear from my fellow trustees. So just bear with me here as I through the speakers list. Okay, so on our speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien, followed by trustee Murphy, trustee O'Hearn Zronata, and trustee De Rosa. So trustee O'Brien, go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Madame Chair. In my first, I would like to ask a question to Legal, if Legal is present, please. So is Ms. Timchenko here? Hello, Ms. Timchenko. Question, I asked you this question last time, and I'd like to ask it again just for clarification. According to our Code of Conduct policy, one of the sanctions is a censure of the trustee. Can you please elaborate as to what that means?
So a censure basically is a statement that's agreed to by resolution admonishing the trustee for the conduct that the trustees have agreed is contrary to the code of conduct. So it is essentially a motion that's approved as a resolution that identifies that the the conduct was not acceptable to the board.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Timchenko. So my point to my fellow trustees is this, according to our Code of Conduct policy, there are three options of a sanction that is given here. The first is a censure of the trustee. The second is barring the trustee from attending all or a part of a meeting of the board or a meeting of a committee of the board. And the third one is barring the trustee from sitting on one or more committees of the board for the period of time specified by the board. So I'm looking at this, and I could be wrong about this, but it seems there there's a bit of an order of severity in sanctions. The first one being the lighter, the second one being a little heavier, and the third one being the heaviest because it does say for a period of time specified by the board, which could be quite long. I'm thinking of our philosophy of the board when it comes to discipline, of even discipline of students. And we do have a philosophy and a policy of progressive discipline in the sense that whenever there is a breach of a Code of Conduct in a student, that there is a there's a first step, first consequence, second consequence, third consequence, et cetera, in the hopes that it's been, that that would change the behavior. So again, I do feel that our policy is not meant to be punitive, but to be helpful to a trustee. So I really am just putting this up for discussion. I know the trustee that has been allegated here has been spoken to several times. You don't have to look at too many meetings where you see that happening, I mean, I don't think that's a secret. So when it comes to an actual sanction, I think the sanction tonight for trustee Ian Tomasi should be censure of the trustee. So a strong statement from the board of what he has done and that the board doesn't accept it and that they will not tolerate it again. And I think discipline, it is a journey. And it's a journey for everyone, in particular here for trustee Ian Tomasi, that this sanction would be the appropriate sanction at this point of time. And of course, if it doesn't work, then the more, the second more severe one, barring from a part of a board meeting, will come next. And the third one, longer periods of standing committees would be better. I think this whole idea of progressive discipline is good because it stops any emotion from getting in the way here. And that is the sense that it's very logical. It's step by step, sequential, and it is just and fair. So I'm not going to put the resolution on yet, but I'd like to hear from other trustees as to what they think about my, this idea. Thank you, Madame Chair.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. I'm going to go down the speakers list. Trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We all have different opinions and different views. So I went through the events and I listed which ones that I determined would be a breach of the code of conduct and then looked at the severity of them. So at a 25 events, there was 13 that I viewed as a breach of the code of conduct, of which seven really were, to me, which would be deemed appropriate to give a warning or censure. But then there was, there was six that were more egregious and would, in my view, cause for one to be removed from a meeting. So this is not one incident, this is 25 incidences that, sorry, I should have my camera on. So this is 25 incidences that were recorded just this year and there was others that were not part of this investigation. So I think we're past the progressive discipline stage. I think it's incumbent on everybody to view it, to view each incident and then determine what the severity should be applied, given the Education Act and our bylaws, which they allow. So I prepared a motion and I've sent it to Rosie. Rosie, if you can put it up? Okay. So the motion states, whereas it has been determined by resolution 157/22 at the May 24, 2022 special board meeting that trustee Antomasi was in breach of the trustee code of calls, trustee code of conduct policy I 36, whereas by board resolution 158/22, the imposition of sanctions was deferred until trustee Antomasi was able to respond to the determination of the breach of code of conduct, but no later than July 29, 2022. Whereas the board of trustees has not received a response to the determination of the breach of the code of conduct by trustee Antomasi, and a special board meeting has been called to deal with the matter on July 26, 2022. Be it resolved that the HCDSB board of trustee imposes sanction as outlined in the Education Act, Section 218.3.3.3, and HCDSB policy I 36, Section 11, barring trustee Antomasi from attending and participating in all HCDSB meetings until February 15, 2022.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Madame Chair, Madame Chair, I object to the consideration of the question.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, trustee O'Brien?
I object to the consideration of the question.
Okay.
Do you need a parliamentary ruling on that, what that means?
Is parliamentarian Kapoor there and available?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, hello. Good evening. An objection to consideration is a is a statement that even considering the question would be a bad thing to do. That's not the exact phrase in Roberts, that's my that's my impromptu paraphrasing of it. And it would require a two-thirds vote to if the objection is upheld with a two-thirds vote, then we do not hear this question. I was questioning whether that would be in order at this point. And in my immediate reaction would be that it would be in order, but I might take a minute to get back, to confirm that and get back to you. If you wish. Otherwise, there's no debate, it's a two-thirds vote on shall the question be considered?
So thank you, Parliamentarian Kapoor. Do you want us to take a very brief pause recess here so that you can have further consideration as you just mentioned and then let us know?
If you would, if you would allow that, Chair, we could stand at ease for about 90 seconds to two minutes.
Great, I would be in favor of that, just so we can get the correct answer. So let's go ahead and do that.
Thank you, Madame Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I am I've consulted and confirmed.
Thank you, go ahead.
Yes, as this is an original motion, it can be, the objection to consideration is in order. And I would advise you to ask the question on whether the question shall be considered. It would require two-thirds vote in the negative to to not consider this question.
Thank you very much, Parliamentarian Kapoor. So let's go ahead and take a vote. So if you are, if you stay in favor, that means that you are in favor of the objection. Other way around. You're in favor of the question, sorry. If you're in favor, you're in favor of the question. If you're opposed, then you're opposed to the question being asked. So let's go around, I'll start with you, Chair Duarte.
So.
So if you're in favor, then that means you're in favor of this question being asked. You're in favor of the motion.
Can you come back to me? Can you come back?
Sure. Trustee O'Hearn Zronata.
I'm in favor of the question being asked.
Trustee Murphy.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
Unopposed.
Carabella.
Opposed.
Did you say my name? Opposed. Yeah, I can't kind of really, I'm really having a hard time hearing, Madame Chair.
Trustee, sorry, trustee Guzo.
In favor.
Okay, so so the group, so the trustees are in favor then of the question for consideration. So, thank you, trustee O'Brien. So we are back to looking for a seconder, or sorry, we did have a seconder, it was seconded by trustee O'Hearn Zronata. So trustee Murphy, I will open the floor to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As stated, when I reviewed the events, specifically event 17, 18, 20, 22, 24, 25, in my view, they are egregious and they meet the standard where one should be barred. And to me, it would meet a reasonable standard, would be to be barred.
Point of order, Madame Chair. Point of order, Madame Chair.
What's your point of order?
My point of order, Madame Chair, isn't not true that we were told that we cannot speak about the report? Am I, am I wrong on that?
I don't know that we actually ever made that determination, that we couldn't speak about it. I don't think there was ever a concrete determination made about that, trustee O'Brien.
Can we get our opinion from Legal on that? Because it was a legal report.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
So if you recall, the last meeting where we were considering these issues, we talked about whether or not the trustees wanted to hold the meeting in public and whether it wanted to make the report public. And a decision was made to hold the meeting in public, but not to release the report. As a result, I think it would be inconsistent to talk about the report in detail. However, a motion to consider the report in detail could be passed by the trustees, that's really your decision. And how you facilitate discussion if you decide not to do that and not to refer to specifics that are in the report, I would just say, try and be careful about the details that you discuss and perhaps just refer to them as generic incidents.
Thank you very much.
Madame Chair, hasn't trustee Murphy actually breached a privacy issue here? Because we never discussed doing this in public in the first place. And hasn't he overstepped himself? I can't hear you, Madame Chair.
Trustee O'Brien. I didn't actually acknowledge, I was thanking Nadia for her comments. You have a question, trustee O'Brien, and follow up to this, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, hasn't trustee Murphy disclosed something private that we have not even brought forth and voted on? And isn't he discussing in report that we have not decided to bring public?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, Mrs. Chair, Miss Chair, Madam Chair.
The point of order.
Can I get my point of order first? I mean, hasn't he done that?
That, it has been dealt with.
I don't think it has, Madame Chair.
Trustee O'Brien.
Actually, so, Madam Chair, he's actually going into, trustee O'Brien is actually going into further detail and it's not debatable, the point of order just needs to be dealt with.
Brian, can we both just, for a minute? Trustee O'Brien, respond back. And I said that I do not believe that trustee Murphy had spoken out of turn or revealed any information. So that point of order was not well taken. And trustee Guzo, you have a point of order, please proceed.
I appeal that point of order, I think he has done that.
My point of
Madame Chair, I appeal your point of order, I think he has done that.
Please, I can't actually proceed even with your appeal if everybody doesn't stop talking.
Okay, I appeal your ruling, I'm interested, you're talking about a report, but we have not even discussed.
Take a vote on the appeal, Madam Chair.
Trustee De Rosa, can you just, you have not even been called upon, this is not a conversation that you're involved with. We're actually speaking with trustee O'Brien.
My hand is up.
De Rosa, please. Trustee O'Brien, you would like to appeal my decision with respect to your point of order?
Correct.
Very much, that's fine, we will take that to a recorded vote. Oh, sorry, yes, that's right, sorry, thank you. I need a seconder for that appeal.
I will second, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, trustee De Rosa, I will take that to a recorded vote. Chair Duarte.
Opposed to the appeal.
Trustee O'Hearn Zronata.
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy.
Opposed.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo.
Opposed.
Brian.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
In favor.
Opposed. Thank you, the appeal fails. Trustee Guzo, you had a point of order?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just my point of order was simply that point of orders aren't debatable once you've given a ruling. That was it, but you've addressed it, so thank you.
I have a point of order.
Very much, trustee Guzo. Sorry, yes, trustee Masti Amar, you have a point of order?
We didn't get to vote when you guys called the vote.
I am so sorry. I apologize for that. So I can go back and take your votes, trustee Masti Amar.
Opposed.
You, and we have trustee Bowie on the line, is that correct?
Yep, opposed as well.
Thank you very much, sorry again for that oversight. Moving forward, trustee Murphy, would you like to continue?
I would like to continue. Whether I will be able to or not remains to be seen.
I, I object to that comment, Madame Chair. That's totally out of order. Thank you, Madame Chair.
Egregious and therefore, in my view, I put forward the motion based on what I feel is a fair and equitable sanctions, which are under our bylaws and Education Act are well within our rights. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Murphy. And so we do have some hands up here that I believe are from sort of our prior conversation. But if those hands need to remain up as part of the discussion around this motion, I can do that. So on the speaker's list currently, I do have trustee O'Herns Renata and trustee De Rosa. Trustee O'Herns Renata, did you want to speak to this motion?
I would, thank you, Madame Vice Chair. And through you too, maybe Chair. One thing that hasn't been discussed and without, you know, expressing any personal details or anything that needs to be not, you know, outside of in camera. Have we heard back from trustee Antomasi at all?
Not on this particular matter, no. Trustee O'Herns Renata, we have not.
Thank you, may I have a follow up?
Yes, of course.
And again, while speaking generically about the whole situation, I myself have done some detailed, what's the word, reading on the report itself. And one of our responsibilities, albeit not pleasant, this is not pleasant for me personally at all, is to self govern. That is what we are here to do and this is what I think needs to happen, unfortunately. So I would be in support of this motion.
Thank you very much, trustee O'Herns Renata. Next on the speaker's list, I do have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a very simple question, which hopefully I can, it'll generate a yes or no answer for Ms. Demenchenko. These deliberations that are, have been made public a couple of times now, do they not belong in camera? And when the decision rendered in camera, then the only public expression of what we've undertaken here is the actual announcement of the sanction. Simple yes or no?
Through you, Madam Chair, it unfortunately isn't a yes or no answer. So depending on the issues that are addressed in the allegations of a code of conduct breach, the trustees can hold it in, hold the deliberations in camera or they can do it in public. And it relates, whether you do one or the other depends on the specific allegations and whether or not they fall under section 207 sub two, sub B of the Education Act, the personal information or financial information of a trustee. In either case, though, the decision itself has to be made in public session.
Do you have a follow up question, trustee?
The decision itself has to be made or has to be announced in a public session?
Made.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the speaker's list, we have trustee Carabella. Trustee Carabella, you have the floor.
Thank you. My question is, has trustee Antomasi been made aware of the steps that we have been going through? And has he been made aware of the decision of the board and this motion itself? And in what way has he been made aware? Thank you.
Trustee Carabella, Director Daly, you have your hand up?
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. Trustee Ian Tomasi was made aware of the motion that was passed at the May meeting.
Thank you, Director Daly. Did you have a follow up, trustee Carabella?
Yes, I have a follow up. My follow up is that, well, regarding this particular motion, within the sanctions available, it's verbal warning, written warning, censure of a trustee and barring the trustee from attending all or part of a one meeting, a meeting of the board or a meeting of a committee of the board. And I think that this motion put forward is egregious itself in that it is barring trustee Antomasi right to the end of the term. And I think that is not appropriate and not in keeping with his responsibility to his stakeholders, his ability as an elected official to represent the people who voted for him and that this sanction is in fact a sanction against ratepayers as well who voted for him. So I cannot support this motion. I cannot. I support the stakeholders who voted for trustee Antomasi and for their right to have their representative at the board table for their term, their full term. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. I don't have any other hands. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this motion before we close on it? Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madame Chair. I'd like to make an amendment to this motion.
Hey, Brian, go ahead, what's your amendment?
I'd like to, it'd be a strike and replace. And the be resolved from the word as to the end.
Trustee De Rosa, your microphone is on.
Okay, and the replace would be stated exactly as in our policy, barring trustee Ian Tomasi from attending one board meeting. From attending the next board meeting.
Thank you, trustee O'Brien. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Carabella seconds it. Trustee O'Brien, did you want to speak to your amendment?
I would, thank you, Madame Chair. Now, I'm looking at the policy itself and the strictest, strictest sanction it says or suggests is barring the trustee from sitting on one or more committees of the board for a period of time. I'm just going to the second before that, barring the trustee from attending all or part of a meeting of a board. This is our first code of conduct we've ever had. And I'm quite surprised that trustee Murphy would go from not only the, the lightest censure, but way past the heaviest one to one that's not even mentioned here and that I've never even heard before in all the history of any board in Ontario. So it is definitely overkill. I, I don't know where this is coming from. I, I hope there's already bad feelings that trustee Murphy is harping here because I, it just behooves me that he would come up with this. And it's not even in the policy at all. At all.
That you speaks, if you stop speaking.
Point of order that trustee O'Brien's comments are inappropriate.
So that point of order is well taken. Trustee O'Brien, can we continue without making accusations of other trustees on their intent?
My apologies, Madame Chair, my apologies sincerely. But it still makes me wonder why there is a sanction that goes beyond anything that's in our policy. And I don't think I can in my consciousness support this motion. Thank you, Madame Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, do we have anyone that would like to speak to this amendment? Before we take it to a recorded vote? Okay, so let's take it to a recorded vote. And so you see the amendment here in front of you, which is the strike and replay out trustee De Rosa. Yes, go ahead, you have the floor.
That's okay, I'll pass, Madam Chair. I had a comment, but that's okay.
De Rosa, okay, so we will go ahead and take a recorded vote then on the amendments.
Can I just say something in closing, Madame Chair? I wanted to say that, remember, I want to, trustees, this is our first code of conduct hearing. And the public is watching, thank you.
O'Brien, you asked if you could close, I didn't respond. Yes, trustee O'Brien, you may go ahead and close, please go ahead and speak.
Madame Chair, I said what I had to say.
Perfect, let's take this to a recorded vote. Chair Duarte?
Putting on the amendment.
We are voting on the amendment as presented in front of us.
Opposed.
Okay, opposed. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
I will abstain.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee O'Herns Renata? Trustee Masri Amar?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
Opposed.
I too am opposed. So the amendment fails, so we go back to the original motion that you see her in front of you. Has everyone spoken to the motion that they wanted to speak to before we go ahead and take a recorded vote on this? Okay.
Sorry.
Trustee Carabella, did you want to speak to this before I go ahead and take a recorded vote? Go ahead.
Thank you, trying to coordinate the hand. And so can I have a legal advice on this, the, this censure? This particular censure, its length and its gravity, especially that it doesn't allow trustee Antomasi to fulfill his role as an elected official, that people have voted for him and that he's being barred from practicing his role as an elected official? And seeing that this motion and this sanction, which I feel is egregious and far extends what is recommended in the Education Act, I would like a legal opinion on our, on the board's ability to make this recommendation.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So yeah, we can go ahead and have a legal answer to the questions for you.
So through you, Madam Chair, the Education Act provides for three types of sanction. One is a censure, one is to restrict the trustee from attendance at a meeting or part of a meeting and then barring a trustee from participation in a committee. The issue of how to interpret the, the phrase a meeting, I would say is a live one. So it, to my knowledge, it hasn't been decided by court. I, in my opinion, believe that a meeting means a particular meeting as opposed to one meeting. I think that if the Education Act intended for the board to only be allowed to restrict attendance at one meeting, that, that word would have been included. It would say one as opposed to a. I think the word a is used so that you can separate that from the meeting or separate that in terms of a particular meeting as opposed to a generic term. So that is my interpretation of that phrase. Whether or not something is appropriate, given circumstances, is really for the trustees to decide. I'm, I'm able to give you information about how to interpret the legislation, but in terms of the appropriate sanction in a particular case, that's really a decision of the board.
Thank you very much, trustee Carabella. Did you have a follow up?
No, thank you. It's unfortunate, I think that should be much more clear. And it's still, we're, you're basically saying he is going to miss the rest of his term. I think that it has consequences to the ratepayers that I, I am not in favor of, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Carabella. Okay, I don't see any other hands up in the chat, so we will go ahead and take this motion to a recorded vote. Okay, Chair Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
De Rosa?
Opposed.
O'Brien?
Opposed.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee O'Herns Renata? Trustee Masri Amar?
In favor.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
I am in favor as well, and so the motion passes. We'll pass this meeting back over to Chair Duarte.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Moving on to the next order of business in camera. We have an in camera item, we need to go back into camera. I'm going to ask for a motion to move back into camera. May I have a mover?
Move it, Brian.
By trustee O'Herns Renata, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Can I do that? Seconded by trustee O'Brien. I'll take this to a recorded vote. Yes, trustees. Yes, thank you, Director Daly. So these are two separate meetings, so trustees, we will have to complete this meeting, adjourn it. Let me check it, Parliamentary in Kippur. Parliamentary in Kippur, do we have to adjourn this meeting and then go into the in camera meeting?
That would be the cleanest way, given how the in camera meetings were, have been conducted, is to adjourn this and then resume the in camera meeting.
Parliamentary in Kippur, we go to the next order of business, which is resolution regarding absentees and adjournment and, and close the meeting and then we move on back to in camera.
Yes, Chair, that is correct.
Thank you, thank you. So trustee O'Herns Renata and trustee O'Brien, we shall continue with the meeting rather than taking the vote. So the next order of business is resolution regarding absentees. Like to have a motion to excuse trustee Ian Tomasi from this meeting.
I'll move it.
By trustee De Rosa. By.
Carabella?
Carabella, all in favor?
In favor.
Being none, the motion to excuse carries. Adjournment and closing prayer, may I have a motion to adjourn this special board meeting?
Move it, Brian.
By trustee O'Brien, seconded by Vice Chair Agnew. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Motion, meeting is adjourned, I will now, closing prayer. Pope Francis is in Canada on a penitential pilgrimage to meet with our country's indigenous peoples. Please join me in the sign of our faith as we pray for the success of this pilgrimage. Father, Son, Holy Spirit, Hail Mary, full of grace, the Lord of thee, blessed art thou amongst women and blessed is the fruit of thy womb, Jesus. Holy Mary, mother of God, pray for us, in us now and at the hour of our death, amen. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Thank you, everybody, for a, for a good meeting, good night. We shall now move to the.